And welcome to the Winnetka Village Council Regular Meeting for October 15, 2019. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask that everybody turn off or mute your cellphones or other electronic devices. We'll start off the meeting with trustee Coladarchi leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three, quorum. Rob, you want to go ahead and check quorum?
Certainly. You've all found your gifts on your chair for October 29th. So, last time I checked, everybody was okay for that meeting. November 5th, regular meeting. All look okay. Then the study session, and then the 19th of November. All those dates look all right?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item number four, public comment. This is the time of the evening where anybody from the audience is welcome to come up to the microphone, share your name with us, and tell us what's on your mind. Would anybody like to address council this evening on any item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, I will close public comment and we'll move forward with reports. First trustees, Penny, you have anything to report this evening? Bob, I'll come back to you in a minute. Jack, you have anything to report?
No.
Andy?
No.
And Bob, what do you have for us this evening?
Well, this is sort of an advance report, and you've probably all read in the newspaper about the governor's task force to reform pensions, and that will impact Winnetka. So, we need to be thinking about this and how it might impact us. And just for a little context, the task force was established by Pritzker in February, and they issued this report just a week or so ago, and it's called the Illinois Pension Consolidation Feasibility Task Force. And basically, in a nutshell, there are roughly 650 public safety pensions in suburban land and downstate, not including Chicago. 650 fire police pension funds, including two in Winnetka. And the proposal here is to consolidate those plans into two funds, a fire fund and a police fund, and for investment purposes, for investment purposes, essentially to take advantage of economies of scale in terms of costs of investment managers, but also to sort of emulate in a way the way IMRF invests and having access to some of maybe more sophisticated investment approaches. They have information in here about the IMF returns versus suburban returns and downstate returns and so on and so forth. And, you know, we could debate some of the assumptions and that type of thing. But essentially, they would then establish for accounting purposes accounts for each municipality. So, within those funds, Winnetka would have their prorata share of the fire fund and the police fund, and at the moment, would still administer the plans in terms of handling payments, disability, et cetera, though that is a second part of the task force study. They did not make a recommendation on that. They only recommended consolidating for investment purposes. Now, this thing, as I said, is moving down the track fast. It's actually proposed to be into the Illinois Legislature at the end of this month. There is not draft language, and in talking to Rob and Tim and Chris and so on and so forth, sort of the concern here, if there is a concern, I mean, on the surface, there are some reasons to think that the investment consolidation could have some merit. But the concern, of course, is twofold. One, does this ultimately become sort of a state-run pool of assets that in some way could be invaded by the state, number one? And number two, in some way, would the municipalities sort of cross-subsidize one another potentially? So, in other words, is there a potential for, if a Winnetka fund became problematic or not funded properly, would other funds have to subsidize Winnetka? And obviously, vice versa, would Winnetka be in a position of having to subsidize other municipalities? And that, devil in details, devil in the draft language, and I think that that is, we will all discuss this and so on, but I think that will be where the rubber meets the road in terms of how we view it, because our funds are on a pretty good track right now, scheduled to be fully funded by 2035. We've been overfunding the plans to get to that position. Our assumptions are conservative, you know, as conservative as any plans out there, so far as we can tell, and we're in a pretty good track, and we'd rather not have that disrupted or invaded in some way. So, more on this to come. It's obviously in the press. It's hard to know. I think on the surface, again, the arguments are purely to improve the investment returns of the average municipality. I don't know that that helps Winnetka all that much, but I understand the point, and we just, more to come, I think, on this issue and how it might impact us. And it's, quote, "mandatory." Mandatory, sounds mandatory. We made inquiry into Ben and Peter on whether there's flexibility as it relates to home rule and so on, and the thought was probably not so much. And so, we need to just hope and lobby, I guess, for the legislation to be as protective as possible for every municipality out there who will become part of these two plans.
So, just for clarification, that the way it is recommended right now, that each municipality would submit their own fund, and it's not like it would be a big pool, and suddenly we're all averaged in in terms of the amount of pension that were paid up. Each municipality is still responsible for their own level of funding?
That is correct right now, Penny. And I would say that if this, their schedule in here, if this passes, is to have the legislation go into effect July 1 of 2020, but that the consolidation and the operation of the consolidated plans not occur, I think, until 7/1/23, I believe. So, there'd be a transition, but we all live in the great land of Lincoln, and so we have a right, I think, to go into this with a little bit of concern and skepticism as to what the, how this might play out, and we will just go in with our eyes wide open.
Does the, when I heard about it, at first, I did a little research and went on to websites that were charting out, you know, the amount paid and the amount paid out to show how different municipalities.
Right.
And it looks like, I mean, there's a real concern, you know, suddenly, we could pick up Mattson or, you know, somebody else who's got a, you know, they owe an enormous amount of money, and they're making the world's smallest contributions, because they don't have any money to do it, but they have these huge unfunded obligations and pensions for their firefighters and their police.
Right.
Do you have any sense about?
Well, there's language in here, Jack, about that the funds will retain their assets and their liabilities. I mean, the language is there, in a paragraph task force sort of summary way. That is the concern. I think that is the concern. Every one of these plans has a different approach to funding in one way or another. And, you know, we have been, again, conservative, overfunding. The regulation from the state is to be 90% funded, I think, by 2040. Is that right? 90% funded by 2040, and we're on track to be 100% funded by 2035. So, we are, you know, going down the path of having, and I would say this, I think that we should also perceive this a little bit from our public safety employee standpoint. They are, they've elected to work in the village of Winnetka for whatever reasons might come into play, but one of those reasons might be that they have a high level of comfort in the ability to live up to pension obligations. And so, it affects the village, but I think, you know, this, these are, you know, important plans to the 60 or so public safety, 60 roughly, public safety employees we have, and we have an obligation, I think, to protect their, to the extent we can, protect these obligations on their behalf, you know? But mandatory and state regulation is kind of the way this reads.
How long has IMRF been in existence? That's been a while, hasn't it?
I recall that in the history lesson, that it was the 50s.
Yeah, I was going to say, and...
And maybe more formalized in the 60s, but it's been around a long time. IMRF is modeled around the task force, or the task force regulation is somewhat similar to IMRF. So, for example, as an IMRF member municipality, we each have our percentage requirement to fund for IMRF pensions. Ours is approximately 14% now. Another, at this time, another municipality may be higher or lower than that based upon their mix of employees and retirees.
Right.
And, you know, their overall compensation level.
And what is the size of the number of, you know, the employee pool in that pension fund versus what the proposed, is it relatively similar? Or, I mean, it's just, it's been, it's been successful over a long time, and I'm just wondering, you know, but is this going to be, what's the size difference in the employee pool?
The plans, they estimate the plans, the suburban, downstate plans, again, Chicago excluded from this at the moment, is about $14 billion.
It's $14 billion.
And I think IMRF is maybe in that ballpark.
Yeah.
But, you know, the thing is, and Tim's been doing some work on this, and we actually did some study on this during the CAFRA period and budget and so on and so forth way back when, on, you know, returns and that type of thing. The assumption here, again, they're making the assumption that the IMRF returns are roughly a percent and a half to 2% on average higher annually over a period of time. Now, you know, we're not going to beat our head against the wall challenging their assumptions, but I would make the point that they live under a different world of investment restrictions than Winnetka does, or a small town down in downstate Illinois. Winnetka is obligated to keep a higher level of core fixed income than IMRF. IMRF can go into alternative investments. And so, it's, you know, whether, whether the return argument really applies as much to Winnetka as it would to some of these other ones, it's a little questionable, but there is an argument to economies of scale. I mean, I wouldn't argue that. I think, again, the issue really is that we have been funding these plans with our money and our public safety employees' money, and we should do all that we can to ensure that the integrity of those pools stays in place for our town and our employees. And we'll know more in two weeks.
Do you get a sense from your investigation of what the driving, or, I mean, I understand economies of scale, but the other concern is that, given the pension crisis that, you know, it's everywhere, and they're trying to find a way out of it, that rich communities or communities that have fully funded or are doing a good job funding their pension plans can become some money just to grab and pull to try to solve that problem? Do you get a sense that, I mean, nobody's going to say that?
It's not, it's not in the, it's not in the task force. I mean, no. But, you know, that would be our concern. I would also make one other point. We don't have to belabor this, and Rob can speak to this better than I can, but there's a second part of this that's going to be voted on, and that is, that for, I'm making it simple, for public safety workers hired after 2011, they're on a different inflation, tier-two inflation, cost of living increases in pension credit, and that credit is proposed to be sweetened going for, actually retroactive, I think, and going forward for those tier-two employees. So, it used to be that the inflation, the cost of living adjustment was the lesser of 3% or half of essentially the CPI. The proposal is lesser of 3% or the CPI.
Then there's a disability benefit.
And a disability benefit, so...
And the rationale for it was that tier-two may not be compliant with safe harbor provisions that are in federal pension code.
And their argument in the task force is that the cost of that, which Tim is trying to figure out what that cost would be to Winnetka going forward, but the cost of that would be made up by the increased investment returns and blah, 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 but one of those is for certain.
Right.
And one of those is not as certain. So, it's, you know, 22 pages, it's an easy read.
Is there anything that we should do relative to...
So, I routed the report last week.
Yeah.
So, if you want to look in your email from Friday, you see the report?
Well, Rob, why don't you mention to Penny what sort of the plan is over the next week or so?
Sure. So, the Northwest Municipal Conference has requested information from each of its members about our assets and how we, how those may be impacted by this legislation. Tim completed that and sent it today, or actually yesterday. They're gathering that data. They'll be having a meeting tomorrow night. They'll, I think they're going to try to give you a quick overview of what they found, but Northwest Municipal Conference will come out with an analysis on the bill or on the report. The bill isn't there yet. The next step will then, we'll see draft bill language.
Okay, and at that point, then...
And that's when, depending upon how it looks, we may ask you to make some phone calls. We'll certainly be making phone calls. We plan on being in touch with Representative Gable and Senator Fine, stating Winnetka's position.
Great.
Particularly to what trustee Dearborn said with the fact that we don't want the funds to be co-mingled, and we don't want the state of Illinois to grab hold of our pension money.
Right.
Want to make sure there's a firewall there.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
I think those are the two primary concerns. You know, overall, the model of IMRF has worked well. The plan is 90% funded.
Yeah.
So, what, you know, the five state plans that are sponsored and paid for in portion are in all by the state, those are certainly, and the Chicago plans are in much worse condition. The 600 and some public safety pension plans are a bit of a mixed bag. Some are good, some are average, and some are trying to catch up. IMRF overall has performed, and I think that's, that was what they were really trying to look at. Can we capture what IMRF has been able to achieve?
There's, there's language in here that, I mean, this, I think the intent is really to provide investment support for the smaller communities.
Right.
Those that may not have the resources or volunteer capacity, you know, to provide, you know, good investment oversight. And they actually say in here that it's mandatory because they essentially want to get the economy of scale. So, they're essentially almost acknowledging that this is not really meant for certain communities, maybe ours included, but they need our assets in there to get to the size that would ultimately benefit the smaller communities. That was my take on it, but...
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, for the overall benefit of the state, right? And that's sort of a, you know, it's kind of a tough call for us, but, you know, if we can get those guarantees, maybe that's something we can do to help.
Yeah, I think as Bob's, excuse me, as Bob said, the devil is in the details on this one, for sure. Just to give everybody a little perspective, this wasn't, I mean, it was in the background a month ago, and then all of a sudden, it was nothing but rapid-fire emails from everybody under the sun, and, you know, Bob's email box was filling up as we went, because every 15 minutes, there was an update or a new interpretation or something. And I really have to thank you, Bob, for being on top of that, because I don't have the bandwidth to understand it, let alone, you know, have an opinion on it one way or another, to be honest with you. And it's certainly nice to have somebody who is in the business, who understands this stuff, and who can recognize where some of the pitfalls are, and really help us all understand, you know, what the best path might be. Certainly, we have to deliberate as a group, but it's nice to be able to lean on people who have that expertise when, and to have a community like this where we've got that sort of expertise to rely on. So, thank you for being on point on this, and Tim, thank you for all the support work, and Rob, same way. Yeah, I have a lot of concerns, just because it is the land of Lincoln, and God knows what's going to come out in that second report. Obviously, I mean, I bristled when I saw the sweeteners for the tier-twos, because I read it as just a political ploy to solidify voter base. And, you know, clearly, there are some other issues behind the scenes, as Rob informed me later, but you always have to be concerned and skeptical, particularly in Illinois. And, you know, this whole idea of, oh, the better returns will take care of these issues that we're dealing with, is what we heard in 2006, when Blagojevich and his buddies just gave away the farm, because the return rates at the time were out of this world. And sure, 12%, 14% return rates, all of this makes perfect sense, but we haven't seen that since 2008.
Right.
Right?
Right.
So, relying on future benefit based on the perspective that we're going to get a better deal out of it isn't, isn't always the most comforting, comforting concept, especially coming out of Springfield. But I'd like to do a little digging, too, on members of the task force and what their capacity is, and it'd be really interesting to see what sort of political threads are running through that group. Not, I'm not, I'm not saying that there's anything bad going on, but I think this thing has to be watched really closely from this point forward. The way it just blew up overnight was remarkable to me and frightening to a certain degree, because that's how business gets done down there.
Well, that's obviously a lot of money.
The concern is, is, yeah, let's blow this up fast, have a deadline. No one has any time to respond. Suddenly, there's a mandatory, my hands in your pocket kind of thing.
Well, I think if things start to turn south, I, this is the one that I think would create a ton of litigation by healthy plans if there were grabs going on or co-mingling. So, but nonetheless, we have to be really vigilant on this and make sure that all the hard work that this village has done to be ahead of the curve is protected and that we can continue to do so and make sure we hit our goals, so...
You know, Chris, one question, or Tim, that I would really have is, since the model is IMRF, is, you know, looking at IMRF, what have been our concerns with that, you know, and maybe using that as well as, you know, a leverage point to get across in terms of thinking about how, what do we need to be thinking about and how can we, you know, what are lessons learned and how can we do this better? So, I don't know what the weaknesses are in IMRF, but that might be a good point to hit home to.
IMRF passed tier-two at the same time the public safety pensions did, so I think some of the concerns that were coming out of the recession were attempted to be addressed by that structure, but we'll take a look.
Yeah, great.
Okay. Well, thank you, thank you again, Bob. Really appreciate the hard work there. Andy, any report?
No report.
Jack?
No report.
Okay. Village attorney?
No report.
Village manager?
Briefly, we had a very successful public safety open house this weekend. It was well-attended, lots of families, cool weather. I think Andy were there, and it was great. Had a good time, so our chiefs were, they put a lot of work into it, but they're very happy with what turned out.
Excellent.
Yep.
Thanks, Rob. Village president, a couple things. Folks, we're almost to the finish line with streetscape, another week or two of mess, and it really should start to look like something. I know it's been hard. Everybody's struggling with it and a lot of grumbling going on at street level, but please trust me on this, that the, that the end results will well be worth the little bit of pain we've suffered for the last six weeks in getting this done. It's starting to come together, but this week, I think, is going to be the big, big turning. Jim Bernal did a great job last week. You know, we originally projected to have the Chestnut and Elm intersection closed until Saturday morning, and he was able to open it up for business late Friday afternoon, which, you know, allowed the restaurants to grab a few more customers and, you know, and I was downtown on Saturday, and as usual, place was packed. There were people wandering around all over the place, still dodging, you know, barricades and the like, but at least the traffic could get through, and the store owners greatly appreciated that as well. Secondly, last week, Assistant Village Manager Megan Pierce and our interim Economic Community Development Director met with a local merchant about a new concept in generating good information flow between the merchants and customers. The concept is called Celebrate Winnetka. It's being championed by Teresa over at Good Grapes. It's a really interesting platform where, you know, the base level is a texting and multimedia platform that allows the merchants who are members of the, of the co-op to send out messages to the general public, so you could, you just receive a text that says, you know, we're having a two-for-one sale at ABC Shoes or something of that nature, and, you know, to also update people on ongoing events and things of that nature. Second tier of it includes actually adding some more activities and events to the calendar and integrating that with the platform as well. And Teresa's done a lot of hard work on it, and we're really looking hard at it, and I know Megan is going to probably bring some stuff back. You know, we had a lot, lot more questions than answers at the first meeting, but underlying it is a platform that's been successful in other areas in really connecting the consumers with the, with the merchants in town and helping them just have more real-time information on things that are going on in our shopping district. So, we're going to keep looking at that and perhaps have some things to share with you in the weeks to come on that. And that's it for me. Okay, moving along. Item number six, this isn't going to be a record-setting evening, I guess, so we blew it already. Approval of the agenda. Does any trustee wish to remove an item on the consent agenda for a separate vote? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the final form of the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. I will now ask the village clerk to read the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Approval of the warrant list dated September 27 through October 10, 2019, in the amount of $797,606.71. Ordinance number MC92019 prohibiting recreational cannabis businesses for adoption. Ordinance number M162019, establishing an administrative procedure to determine eligibility for benefits under the Illinois Public Safety Employee Benefits Act for adoption. Resolution number R772019, salt dome roof repair bids for adoption, and resolution number R782019, waiving bidding and approving a contract with Fairbanks Morse LLC for repairs to diesel generator and turbocharger for adoption.
Great, thank you, Rob. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by omnibus vote?
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote?
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Lambier?
Yes.
Trustee Coladarchi?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item number eight, ordinances and resolutions. Resolution number R792019, approving an agreement with Lauterback and Amen for auditing services, and this is up for adoption. Lauterback and Amen specializes in the government auditing sector, provides a high quality of work at reasonable prices. Village staff therefore recommends renewing their audit agreement for another three years, and Finance Director Tim Sloth is here to review. I might add that I, Lauterback and Amen have been doing our audits since I first came on Village Council in 28, 2008, and I think they were doing it for several years before then, and have done a fantastic job up to this point, so, Tim, go ahead and...
Good evening. Yes, we are asking council's approval to extend Lauterback's engagement for the audit contract for three years for 2019, 2020, and 2021. Last year, we paid $30,160 for the annual audit. For the three-year average, for the upcoming three-year renewal period, is also $30,160. So, essentially, we're holding pricing flat on this contract. We agreed, the audit is very smooth with Lauterback and Amen. They do a great job. They're also very thorough. They're a valuable resource in terms of implementing any new accounting pronouncements, and, you know, we, you know, are happy with the service that they provide. But ultimately, the auditors report to the village council, and it's, you know, the council's decision to make that recommendation.
And Tim, if I remember correctly, we've, we've won excellence awards for many years running in the, in the audit department?
Yes, we've won the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for many years. It's, I don't know the exact number of years, but it's been probably over 20 years.
Wow.
And that, what that means is we prepare our comprehensive annual financial report to criteria of high standards, so that the report is, meets transparency initiatives and can be easily comparable to other communities, and it's a report of a high quality.
Great. Any questions for Tim? Seeing none, I'll open it up to the audience. Pat, you want to say anything about our engagement with Lauterback and Amen?
This $30,000 is for the total three-year period, or...
It's, that's an annual price.
$30,000 per year.
You choose.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
How many months does the, do the auditors spend working with you all?
So, the audit process last year officially kicked off the day after you guys approved the budget. the budget. We met with Ron Amen to start planning out the audit. They come out in April for about two weeks of field work, and then in May, there's a lot of back and forth, kind of finalizing the, you know, various numbers in the statistics section. So it, overall, it's a couple of months of work and then, you know, over a kind of a six-month kind of planning and work.
Okay. All right, there's no more comments. I'll ask for a motion to adopt resolution number R792019.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Trustee Lambier?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Kalladarchi?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item nine, old business, there is none this evening. Item 10, new business, there is none this evening. And item 11, I'm still working on it, but there are no appointments as of this evening, I'm sorry. Item number 12, closed session. May I have a motion to go, go into closed session to discuss the purchase or lease of real property pursuant to Section 2C5 of the Illinois Opens Meeting Act?
So... Second.
Roll call vote?
Trustee Kalladarchi?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Lambier?
Yep.
Thank you, the motion carries. The council meeting will adjourn immediately after the closed session. Thanks for coming out tonight, and thanks for the good news.